Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, April 16th. The time is 6:30 PM. We're in the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room on the second floor of Town Hall. I would ask, before we ask anybody to stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. Before I start the meeting, congratulations to Mr. Perez on his reelection.
Congratulations to everybody that ran, actually.
Yes.
Everybody that ran, everyone that got involved.
Thanks to a couple of writing candidates stood up at the last minute and filled some open spots, so thanks to them as well. It's nice to have every elected board full at the moment, which it almost wasn't, so that's a great thing. All right, moving along. The first thing on the agenda is a vote to reorganize the board. Quick note, that'll be for next meeting. This meeting stays as it is. And I'll open it, I guess, for discussion, or maybe I start the discussion. Over the last couple of years, the board, we had several people leave prior to the end of their term, and that time I've acted as chair, having not a whole hell of a lot of seniority, but a little bit of seniority in place. And with that, traditionally, what's happened with this board is we've rotated on an annual basis, and it usually falls that the person that's up for election the next year serves as chair, and then the rotation continues. That would be my recommendation to the board. It looks selfish, and I apologize. I happen to be up, but I don't know how else to get the rotation back in proper form, so.
I don't believe it's selfish. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think you've done a great job.
It probably hits you the most by skipping you.
No, I think, I think in order to get the board back to the proper alignment, which we all agree on is the alignment, I think the right move is to keep it a chair, move Marcy to vice, and then I'll step over to clerk.
And that'll be the rotation moving forward again? All right. Is that everybody good?
I make a motion to reorganize the board, to have Jeff Ryan stay as chair, Marcy lead to go to vice chair, and Mike Perez will clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your microphone's red. I don't know if you want to tap it. Okay. Next on the agenda is a vote to assign both the surgi signatory, the road cut permit signatory, and the parking clerk. I believe by our bylaws, the chair of the Board of Selectmen is the surgi signatory, so that at this point is me. And I don't know if you two want to exchange money on who gets the other two, but road cut is usually pretty busy, and parking clerk.
I've got the pen, so it looks like I may be doing road cut.
I pass the pen off to Marcy.
All right, so at this point, I'll make a motion that Jeff Ryan, myself, serves as surgi signatory. Road cut permit signatory goes to Marcy as vice chair, and parking clerk goes to Mike as clerk.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, so that's all out of the way, and that takes effect next meeting. Next up is just a site plan review. This is a continuation of a discussion we had a while ago for Vineyard Farms. This first part is just us, we'd be more than welcome to talk about it, but it's really just a recommendation that we make to the planning board. The other two, as far as the entertainment license and the one-day license, we'll actually vote on. But if you would like to, again, we kind of went through it with the all-alcohol license, but if you would like to talk about what your plan is as far as the site plan, or we can just review it on the screen, whatever works for you.
Well, basically, I had a conversation with Ilya today, and the plan is, they've had this one-day license before, and I understand they work very well. Ilya himself is the server, and I guess this is just temporary, because to my knowledge, the state, he's waiting for the state license.
That would be correct. The site plan review is more about defining an area in which the alcohol will be consumed in?
It's already marked off, and everybody that consumes alcohol is within those boundaries.
Okay. So it is marked. It looks like if you're looking at the farm from the road, it's to the right, kind of where the Christmas trees were, a couple of years ago, the stands.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you're looking at the farm, it is on the right side.
Okay.
Sorry, I was looking at the street.
So, you know, we talked about this. We voted in favor of the permanent alcohol license, and the reason we're doing the one day is because the permanent one might not show up in time for when you want to start your activities. So with that in mind, I've read through this. It makes sense to me to be located there. I have no further discussion. I'll turn it over to... So at this point, we make a recommendation to the planning board, and that would be, I think, unanimously in favor of... The next piece is the vote to approve the entertainment license for Vineyard Farm located at 175 East Center Street. So I understand with this, the entertainment license, there've been a few things checked off, and I'm just going to catch up here in terms of pages. I do have some questions. Do we have some different hours on things?
Actually, you could probably speak to that, whether or not I...
So on the entertainment license, and I want to get there because we're just reviewing this. The entertainment license, you indicate hours from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is fine. It's all fine. I just, I want to make sure we're all... And then Christine, if you go down a few more pages on the application for the one-day liquor license, the hours for the liquor license are from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I want to know if that's the intention and that works?
Yeah, it's working.
I didn't know with the entertainment going two hours after the liquor license.
Yeah, that's the way we've done it before.
Okay.
So the intent is to stop the alcohol at 8:00 and then have people there till 10:00?
Really not, no. We never did like that, but now we can do by 8:00 o'clock. It's gonna be fine.
Okay, so we just want to make sure that we're approving the right thing and that there's no discrepancy in the paperwork, because if there is...
Yeah, 8:00 o'clock is fine for the event and...
Well, the event, you have it ending at 11:00 PM.
It doesn't have to go that late, but that's as late as you could go.
Yeah, that can be better if you do it like...
If you were doing a movie night in the middle of summer, it's not going to get dark enough till 8:30 to start it, so.
No, my question is, this includes for the summer events also, correct?
This, right now, will work for you until the state liquor license gets approved. And the state...
It'll work for those five dates.
Exactly.
I'm sorry.
Just the five dates listed up there.
Just the five dates, and then when your full liquor license comes through, it would supersede this, I would assume?
Yeah, exactly.
And the state license, what we did, based on the interviews with the police and whatnot, the state license, or what we will come back with, the state license is 10:30 to 10:00 PM for alcohol sales.
Yeah, I feel like that might be a discrepancy on there.
So that should be changed to 10:00 PM?
I believe so. I think that's the intent.
Yeah.
So we are first voting on the entertainment license, so I just, I wanted to bring them both up to get timing right, but the entertainment license from...
I didn't see it.
I guess the question is, for your entertainment license, part of what you're thinking about is a movie night. Do you envision that you're going to have people drinking during movie night?
And it's okay if they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just need to clarify.
Correct, because right now, the way you have it designed, your movie night, as Jeff has said, if it starts after 8:00 at night, you're not going to be able to sell alcohol at that time and be compliant with the license request. So if you're envisioning that you want to have alcohol, then we need to amend those hours if the board so chooses to. So I think that's why they're asking about the consistency with the hours, unless there's a specific reason why you want the differences, and again, I would just inform them.
For these days, I don't think it's really gonna do a movie night for these five dates. It's gonna be...
See, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was under the impression that we would not wait.
Understood.
You're voting just on these particular nights?
Yep.
And then...
It's just because traditionally, these two times line up on most people's applications. They don't have to. It's perfectly fine. It's just when they're different. To me, it raised a flag that I wanted to have.
So if you're voting on the entertainment, beyond these specific days for the licenses, I would go to 10:00 PM on the entertainment.
Or that's for alcohol?
Well, our first vote tonight is 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM for an entertainment license. Vocals, farm events, karaoke, jukebox. So I have no objection to that. So we'll do that, and then we'll talk. The alcohol is what might change, so, on the one-day licenses. So I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment license application for Vineyard Farms located at 175 East Center Street as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's done. So that...
So that's 11:00 PM?
That's 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And that will run for the year, right? You can do entertainment as soon as you get the license, tomorrow, the next day.
Correct.
And there's no restriction. The alcohol, obviously, we have one day. We have a request for the 19th, the 20th, and the 26th, and 27th of April, and then May 11th. And then hopefully sometime in that realm, the state ABC will approve the alcohol license, which will then be open to the hours that are stated on that, which looks like it's 10:30 to 10:00 PM. So this, right now, if these hours work for you, you're more than welcome to keep them. If you think they, you know, if that's for the event, you understand your events. I'm not even asking what they are. But if that works for you as it is, we can approve this this way?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I just saw it different. You know, I just, again, because the two numbers were different, I wanted to...
Just to clarify, that means you wouldn't be able to serve alcohol for these dates past 8:00 PM?
Okay.
If your event runs to 10:00 or 11:00, you can't have alcohol past 8:00, if we don't change that time?
Yeah, if you can change, that'll be good.
Right, so what time would you like then?
10:00?
10:00?
Okay, all right.
All right, so with that in mind, and I'm good, I think everybody good. We'll make a motion. We can discuss it anyhow. Like to approve, vote to approve a one-day liquor license application for Vineyard Farm located at 175 East Center Street on April 19th, April 20th, April 26th, April 27th, and May 11th, the hours from 11:00 AM till 10:00 PM.
I think you made a motion.
This is the motion.
I think you made a motion, and I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you are... Is it okay?
Oh, that's even better.
Okay. So, the only thing we ask, we ask anybody with an entertainment license, anybody with, you know, be sensitive to your neighbors, and they know that there's a large field, but I also know sound can carry, so if you have something amplified going, please just be sensitive to anybody, any houses that might be around there. And then one thing we discuss with every alcohol, and we did it the last time, but I will do it again with this one-day license. I know you've read the rules. I know you've signed off on the rules, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask them now, or ask them before you make a questionable decision, because our hands are tied with our policy as to how we would react if there's a violation, so. If you're not sure about something, please reach out to the office, or please reach out to Officer Reagan as our alcohol agent. Anybody there can clarify anything. All right, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Don't forget to stop by.
We won't. We won't forget, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. All right, next, I am going to make a motion to vote to approve the one-day liquor license for the Lion Club Spring Fest on May 18th at 2025 at Friendship Park. I'm also going to recommend with this motion, should it pass, that we waive the fees associated with it.
We'll second that.
And any discussion? So this is Spring Fest. It's taking place, for lack of a better, Friendship Park between the library and Howard. There's a diagram that ironically, knowing if you know Jerry Lawrence, you understand what he does for a living. Looks like an airplane, an airplane seating, but I did text him last night, and he denied having anything to do with setting this up. But this was held last year somewhat in place of, it's not in place of, but a smaller version of Park Day, if you will. And I know there, I saw, you know, a bunch here, a lot of kids, a lot of people having fun last year, so.
It was a good time I attended.
So I have no objection. Any discussion, Mike?
I have none. Good time.
So with the motion made, I'll... I don't know if anybody's seconded it.
Yeah, we seconded it.
Okay, so we'll just take a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Next, I'll make a motion to appoint Paula Schlosser, is that, to the OCS Board of Directors.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, next, we're gonna grab some assists from David here in this process, but next up is to review and vote on recommendations, approve motions, and assign readers and articles for the annual town meeting.
I think we skipped Tom Souza's...
Oh, shoot. I'm so sorry. Thank you. Next, entertain a motion, or make a motion to approve Tom Souza's employment contract amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? This is just lining Tom up with how the rest of the DPW hours are. Nothing else changes, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
So at this point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now, I'll say this again. Next is review and vote on the recommendation, approve motion, and assign readers on articles for the annual town meeting with a note that it will be subject to final review at Town Council.
Thank you. Christine, if you can move to the page that has the flow chart, that one-page flow chart, I think. So what I did was I created a one-page cheat sheet for the board, so we don't have to necessarily flip through 40 or 50 pages. Obviously, if you want to, you feel free to do so. So I'm going to batch these a little bit. The motion before you is going to be first, is to be voting on your recommendations. So Article 1 and 2, those will be together as a consent article. They are just to be able to bring in the annual town reports and also to enter contracts with Mass DOT. Article 3 is that we set the salaries for all elected officials. 4, you've already voted on, which is your budget. 5, you've already discussed as well, which is the exemptions to the Board of Assessors. That's actually 5 and 6. 7 will be to accept chapter 90 funds. 8 and 9 is your CPC articles. Article 10 is for OPEB. 11 is Web Task Force that we do every year. And number 12 is we received through the multi-district IE class action lawsuit about $140,000 from the opiate settlements, and that money just has to be settled into an account, so that way it could be spent at a later date. And Article 13 is a transfer from the state that we receive every year. We place it into our sidewalk fund, but this is a fee that is charged for every ride-sharing service, such as Uber or Lyft, and when they pay that, it comes directly to us. Article 14 through 26 is all of your capital budget items, and all of those would be free cash as well. Again, most of those you have seen. 29 and 30 are general bylaws. One is going to be to make an amendment to the animal control bylaw, specific to how many dogs and also kenneling of them. And the 30 is a stormwater management change. Article 31 is also a general bylaw that will be sponsored by the board, that is in reference to the finance committee appointment process, which you've already seen before as well. Article 33 through 39 will be zoning bylaw, so I'll quickly go through these. And again, if anybody wants to return to any one article, just say, and then that way, I'm sure Jeff would return back to it. But 33 is for the MBTA district.
I want to come back to that.
Article 34 is for the ADU, so that we passed that last year, but it now has to comply with state law. Fencing and screening on 35. Density provisions on 36. 37 was for portable storage buildings, or temporary storage.
Yep.
38 is to amend the site plan review process that allows the building inspector to not have to send everything to the planning board on simple items, except lamp post lane. We attempted to do that last year. All the paperwork was incomplete, so the planning board would be looking to do that. And then on the bottom, you'll see Articles 27 and 28 are both capital budget items for the water department, and those are for the dump truck and for the new iron manganese plant. So that means you will have a total of 39 articles that you have placed. I'm so sorry. I skipped Article 32, which is the easement on River Street. On Article 32, we will go to town meeting looking for a permanent easement, because we want to fit, it encroaches a little bit on the Metcalf property for our sidewalk, but at your most recent meeting, you approved a right-of-entry, so that way if we had to access that in the meantime, we could. And again, thank you to the Metcalfs, because they're being pretty flexible with us. One item of note, I shouldn't have mentioned this last meeting, is that at capital budget, it was requested and approved for about $16,000 of defibrillators at the school, but Linda, our ATA HR Director, did a nice job. She has been able to secure some grants for those, and the school applied for it and will receive those. So as a result, we were able to take that off and save $16,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Linda.
So at this point, if the board thinks that it would recommend all of them minus 33, 37, you can take that vote. If you want to wait until after you do the review of 33, 37, then do it at that time, that's fine, but usually the easiest way is you know you're all in agreement with 37 of them, take that vote, and then discuss 33, 37, in case there's a split vote.
Yep, and I'm good with that. So at this time, I entertain a motion to recommend all articles and hold on Article 33 and hold on Article 37 for more discussion.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I missed, I had a question on 29, actually.
Okay, let's add that in there, too.
Okay.
And it might be simple, but that's okay. We'll just add it to the, it's only three.
Okay, so I'll amend that motion to exclude Article 29, 33, and 37, but we'll make a motion to recommend all other articles unanimously.
Sorry, but second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that said, what that means is, is that in your finance committee book that comes out, there will be a place on it that will show Board of Selectmen recommendation, and then finance committee recommendation. On all of those, it will say 3-0 recommended by Board of Selectmen, and you'll recall, Jeff, that when the moderator says Board of Selectmen, you will then state the recommendation. And then whatever they are for the other three will capture those as well.
All right, so 29. Mike, you're...
Yeah, I just, I don't remember having a conversation about this before, and we might have. I just missed it about kenneling of dogs.
Yep. So I don't know, yeah, when Tracy was here, that was part of it. I don't know a lot about it. All I do know is this, is that the bylaw study committee approved it or recommended it. Our animal control officer is Russ Regan, and Russ Regan and the police chief who I spoke to today, they said that there's not much of an impact with it. It basically talks about when you're supposed to kennel dogs. I think it's when you get over three. But again, unfortunately, I don't know much more than that.
My best understanding of this, and I say it with 60% confidence, so, is that this is to comply with a state law called, and it was nicknamed Ollie's Law, named after a dog in a kennel situation, that was horrible, for lack of a better, and that this is coming into play. I think it's a little strict. You have three more dogs, but...
This is four. A pack collection of more than four dogs.
Correct, because technically you can have three, I think you could have three by right and then over four, and Jeff, you're 1,000% correct. In fact, it's right there, is that you'll see it's MGL Chapter 140, Section 174G. So that's entirely correct. I just don't know it enough, but you're entirely correct that this was written to comply with that mass general law. And because between the bylaw study committee, Tracy, the animal control officer, Officer Regan, and the police chief, nobody had a lot of energy about it. I didn't really drill down more, so I apologize.
Similar, but different to the ADU piece, you know, like it's a reaction to state law to come into compliance.
I'm just surprised it's not about any other animal, just dogs.
So that is always the misnomer, because the animal control officer, mass general law, you would think pertains to all animals, but it actually only refers to dogs. And so that's always one of the items of note whenever somebody has that question, is they say, "He's the animal control officer. Come out and get my snake." And I don't think a lot of people want to do that, but in any event, the animal control officer is specific by general law to dogs and dogs' own.
I will state that is why President, we showed up one morning, and there were two cows on the Flaherty Field, and I did call the police, and they did come and assist and remove all those, so. It's just a classic West Bridgewater event, so.
That's not the first time, and it will not be the last.
No, no, it's actually...
It's happened several times.
A lot of things happened in those years, and that's one of the few that I still remember, so.
I'm good with 29.
Okay.
So if that's the case, I would take that motion now, in case the other two become a split vote.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend unanimously Article 29.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
33, MBTA. We've sat through presentations multiple times, come back and forth on this. This is me personally wanting to address it, because I know there's a lot of conversation out there about it. You know, on one shoulder, I'm offended that the state says, you know, "Vote on this, but if you don't vote this way, we're taking money," like fundamentally, that...
Rubs you the wrong way.
Incredibly. Don't tell me to vote on it if you're going to make the change anyhow. On the other side of that, we're yet to fully quantify, but there are significant amounts of dollars at risk to the town by not complying. And other towns have fought it to this point. Milton, in particular, fought it and lost to the Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court. From what I understand, that fight cost them $300,000, $350,000 to get there. So should the town vote no on this, we would have to come back and ask for a legal defense fund to challenge this, because voting no with no dollars is, that makes no sense. So a no vote, at the minimum, would cost that much money to fight it. The legislature, when they originally passed this, gave the governor the right to restrict funds, and since then has increased that right. Beacon Hill, at the end of the day, is controlled by one party and really probably five people at this point. So there's a huge piece of me that wants to fight this, and there's a huge piece of me that doesn't think we'll ever win. And I will state this more eloquently and with more detail and more fact at town meeting. I think it's, I think it could be a potential mistake to vote no, but I woke up on the same side of the bed I do every day, and I've flipped this vote in my head multiple, multiple times, but right now, I can't recommend this. So my vote on this is no, out of principle, but that might be fiscally irresponsible to vote that way, and I will, I owe the town some more homework and to try to tally the expense and at least present that as a potential loss, if should we choose to vote no, because I think there's a financial loss to the town in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least, and it seems like the governor gets more and more broad powers to restrict money. And, you know, if you look through some of this, the engineering grants that we have, the grants to repair, the grants to the water, you know, we rely on the state for a lot of funds, and it could be detrimental to the town to vote no. There's a piece of me also that thinks voting now in May, no, still gives us till December to change. to change our mind, should something else come up, but I'm not sure that that's gonna really change anything, because unless Beacon Hill changes, chances of something here changing are slim and none. So I think a no vote, in principle, is the right thing, but the no vote from a financial and responsibility perspective might be the wrong thing. So I will have, or, you know, collectively, however you guys vote, whatever you want to do, I think we have to present to the town that this is the potential risk of voting no from a financial perspective versus voting yes. And I do think that, should it become a yes vote, the location of this is in the correct spot, and it's, you know, it's a very controlled and small event, a small location, so impact to the town will be there, but my gut says the impact to the town for additional, additional people in town, maybe additional students, services, all around, would probably be less of an impact than what we're gonna lose from the state on an annual basis, so.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, voting yes would just be simply on the overlay. And personal, my personal feelings aside, I have the same sentiment as you as far as my personal feelings. But now thinking, big picture, thirty thousand foot view, looking down on the financial aspect of it, the money that we would have to dish out for lawyer fees. And then at the end of the day, we would just be asking for our own tax money back by those grants, because that's all those grants are, is technically our own tax money that we pay the state wanting that money back. So on a personal, my personal vote on this matter is no. However, from a thirty thousand foot view and looking at it on the town perspective, and when we really boil down and do it, and forget all the political aspects and political, what is being asked of us is an overlay. And I will add that a lot of people in, on this town spend a lot of time on putting this overlay together and thank them for that. And please, I don't want anyone to think that our vote has anything to do with the hard work that we know that they've put into this. But, yeah, I mean, on a personal level, I don't, I don't like this, I don't like this finger pointing must be this way. However, from a town perspective, I could see where we vote no now and then have to go and do this again, that's gonna cost more money again. So it's like, it continues to be money. You know what I mean? And at the end of the day, I don't believe that no matter how much money we throw at this from our town perspective, we're not gonna win.
That's probably accurate. I said, that's probably accurate. I don't think, I don't know that we win. So, Marcy?
I think you guys have basically said it all and covered it all. It's not really all that much left to say. I second and agree with all of that. I don't like being told what to do and then, or asked to take a vote and then told that if we don't, you know, come out with the vote that they want, that we're then gonna be penalized for that. And at the end of the day, I also believe we're just recommending, right? Like, the residents still have to vote on it. We can all vote no, and the residents can all vote yes. So, I mean, I'm just gonna stand by what I think, and I think we should vote no. I know that there may be a significant financial impact to the town because of that, but somebody's gotta stand up to the state, and I'm willing to vote no. And put it on the warrant and let the, you know, residents vote on it and everything and make their decision collectively. But personally, I don't believe it's what's best, and so I would be voting no to recommend.
But I think the motion coming from this board is not our personal feeling, but more so what we think would be best from the town, for the town.
I don't think it would be best for the town.
Hey, I just wanted to clear it up.
I don't think it'd fit, the, yeah, I don't think it fits in the town.
I love it, I'll die on the sword with you, three unanimous no's.
You need action? Yeah, we should, we got a motion, that's fine. So based on discussion, I'll make a motion that this article is not recommended by zero to three votes.
Second.
Second.
Oh, third.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll die on the hill together.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we have an obligation to present our view and also present the facts and be as transparent as we can at the meeting as to what the potential cost would be.
Exactly, and then let the people vote.
And so the next on the list was thirty-seven, which was just the sheds, just the sheds, portable, portable storage units.
You know what page that is?
Yes, seventy-one.
Perfect.
Thank you. Yep. This, we talked about at our last meeting, and we recommended that, that there be a grace period before, really, at the end of the day, what we're talking about was a fee, right? Building permits, a hundred and twenty dollars, if somebody's getting their, somebody's moving, getting something renovated, things along those lines, they shouldn't have to pay for some, a basic need like that. However, there are instances, and can be instances, where people have two or three of these sitting on their front lawn for years, which probably isn't the right thing either. So my understanding is that the planning board's hearing is April thirtieth.
Yes.
And at that hearing, there will be an amendment, hopefully, to this, to include that forty-five days. So my vote for this is yes, with the assumption that that amendment makes it to the article. Otherwise, my vote would be no, if it didn't, so. That was the, that was my need to clarify before we just move forward with this.
Yeah, so from a process standpoint, all zoning articles or amendments are required to come from the planning board to town meeting or originate from the planning board. So they're having a planning board hearing on April thirtieth. I think I provided all of you with that documentation. It is expected and anticipated that, based on the vote of the selectmen at your last meeting, that we have already formalized a memo to the planning board, in that they will be requested to amend the motion to include the forty-five days before permit has to be applied for. Obviously, then town meeting has to vote on it. The one thing to keep in mind is that if, for whatever reason, the planning board does not approve it, that doesn't mean the selectmen can't make that motion at town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw. It's just a motion. So these, what you voted on last time was to place the articles on the warrant. So because of timing, the articles, and not the motions, the articles are placed in the warrant, and then that's gonna go to print at the end of this week, and it will be in that FinCom book. The motion, then, will be read by the planning board in this case, and because these are long, nobody reads the entire article. It just says, motion as printed in the warrant, with the amendment of to include a forty-five day clause. That's what's envisioned. I assume, based on the feedback that I received, that the planning board will vote in favor of that, but again, I'm just informing you that if they don't, you can always make that a motion amendment at town meeting.
So it's hard to recommend as it currently is versus, but I don't wanna vote no. I don't, I've never abstained from a vote in my life, because I think we're here to vote and express our opinion, but I don't wanna vote no to tank this before, you know, to, but I don't wanna vote yes because I don't like it as it is. So I'm not, do we abstain? Do we hold, withhold from vote pending amendment? I don't know what we can do or what gets printed on the book. Ultimately, what I would like to do is withhold any recommendation on this until the, until after the planning board, the final.
Can we make a motion at the meeting, like, on this? Can we take our vote at the meeting on this?
In reference to what?
To, to, to this, because it's weird, because it's hard to vote on something where we don't like, I don't personally like how it's written either, simply because of what we've already discussed. So is there a way to not vote on it now and then vote on it there?
Or vote on it two weeks, well, two weeks from now might be the meeting, but we have a May first meeting, right? Or May second or whatever.
Yep, so you have a meeting in May. The problem is the books have to be printed, because there's state requirements for posting notices, so that's why...
And our vote has to be on there?
Well, that's what we've always done as a town. So there's no requirement of law that it has to be in there, but that's what you've always done, so.
So if we didn't vote on this tonight, and then at town meeting, explain that we didn't vote on it because we didn't have the final article until after the book was passed and at our May, if it's May second, whatever day our May meeting is, we can entertain, we can make a vote. Obviously, it doesn't get printed in the book, but we can, we can then make a recommendation.
Because what I can do on that one there, because I don't want to make it too clumsy, what I would do is I just would omit any reference to the Board of Selectmen vote, and I would only place the finance committee vote. And then at your next meeting, which I believe is on May seventh, is that you would then have, we would all have the information from the planning board, then you could take your vote, because at the end of the day, the moderator's gonna ask you on May twelfth, what is the recommendation from the board?
Yeah.
And then you'll be able to verbalize what that updated vote is.
Okay.
So if that's the case, then at this point, I would just take a motion to table the recommendation on Article thirty-seven until your May seventh meeting.
Okay. Make a motion to table the Article thirty-seven, motion until our May seventh meeting.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's hard to vote on something that...
Yep.
Yep.
So with that said, what I'm gonna capture in print is that all articles exclusive of thirty-three and thirty-seven are recommended unanimously at three-zero. Article thirty-three, which is the MBTA article, will be not recommended unanimously three-zero. And at this point, Article thirty-seven, I will not have anything printed in the book in reference to a recommendation from the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's your recommendations. The next one, then, you'll be voting is on your motions. The motions basically are just to move whatever the underlying article is. And the key to that is just the way also how you fund it. So that's why, if we could go to that flow page, there it is. So we're not doing any borrowing articles on the town side, there is only one borrowing article on the water department, which is Article twenty-eight, which is on the bottom of this sheet. So you've already placed all the warrant articles, we're just, really, the motions become perfunctory based on that article. But if you have any questions, please let me know. If not, I would ask you to approve the motions, but I would ask you to do it subject to final town council review. We have already been going back and forth. There's always a couple of little words we have to change. It doesn't make a material impact, but it might be how we might want to phrase a word or two.
Just run through this one more time.
Okay. So then I would just ask for a motion to approve all the motions as presented, subject to final review by town council.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the last is to assign the readers. So I think the best way to do this, can you blow that up a little bit?
Mike has told me he likes to read.
He does it pretty, pretty well.
You can have one through thirty-seven. Just gonna work off that sheet right there.
I think so, it might just be the easiest.
Yep.
Here we go.
Well, I guess, before we get too far, just to the board, is there anything that anybody is, has a strong desire to speak to before we kind of just go through what's probably a rotation here for a little bit, right?
Okay. So Article one in Article two is, it would be normally moved by the board. Those are, that's a consent article, again, perfunctory vote, and so normally, we go in rotation of the order, so therefore, that one, normally, one and two, would then be the chair.
Okay.
All right, so if, so that would be Jeff. Article three is moved by the board as well. That sets the salaries of all elected officials, and in this case, that would be Mike. The omnibus budget will be the finance committee. You've already reviewed and approved that budget, and they have as well, which I'll get to further in the agenda. Article five in Article six, the first one, will be to increase for veterans their COLA under the Heroes Act. And Article six is to do the annual exemption increases as well. They will be moved by the Board of Assessors. Article seven, which is to spend Chapter seventy funds, would be approved, would be moved by the DPW. Article eight and nine is CPC. Article ten, eleven is a treasurer in the police department as presented. Article twelve would be to create the opiate settlement account. That means, in this case, it would be Marcy.
Sorry, I did something, I lost everything.
That's okay. No, sorry, sorry, we'll wait.
I don't know what I did. Thank you.
So Article twelve would be Board of Selectmen to create the opiate account. Again, the next ones will then be, and then DPW would do the transfer into the sidewalk, hazardous waste day, matcha state grant for the Elm Street Bridge, and do the dump truck and the mower, those are all capital budget, polices for the cruisers and the tasers, eighteen and nineteen, fire would be twenty through twenty-two, town clerk would be twenty-three, council on aging, twenty-four, the school has two capital budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, the bylaws, general bylaws, police for animal control, conservation for stormwater, and Board of Selectmen for the finance committee appointment process, so that would be Jeff, going back through the process. The easement would then be Mike. Then all of the planning board, all the zoning bylaws from thirty-three through thirty-nine, through thirty-eight will be planning board. Article thirty-nine will be planning board, because that will be to accept the road, which was part of a subdivision. And then Article twenty-seven and twenty-eight will both be water department for their capital budget items. So that's what my recommendation would be. If that's okay, you would take that vote. If you want to change it up, then we'll change it up.
Works for me, if it works for you.
Works for me.
Did Marcy read anything?
No, I'm gonna give mine to you. No, yeah, I got something. Don't you worry.
She's got opioid settlement.
There's only, there's only five for the board, so two of you have two and one has one.
All right.
You looking for a motion?
Please.
Make a motion, accept.
The readers as presented.
The readers as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that was easy, great. So we gotta sign the annual town meeting warrant? Is that just a note, or is that a motion?
We've just normally taken a vote.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to vote on antique slash secondhand license renewals, specifically WB Coin and Jewelry Buyers LLC, Attic Treasures, Eclectic Treasures, Lamp Light Shop, One Horse Shea, and WB Antiques. And just a quick question, where is One Horse Shea? Any idea? Don't need an answer, I just love the name.
Yep.
Not that there aren't a couple of the good names in here. They got my attention.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's near Front Line.
What's that?
I think it's over near Front Line.
Is that them?
Okay.
Is that it?
I think so.
That'll be the trivia question for the night to be answered at the next meeting.
And as Christine handled, you could see that she has the recommendation there. It's also subject to final inspections, outstanding documents, and collection of license fees.
Take a second on that motion?
Second.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda, make a motion to approve the capital budget meeting minutes of March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. Second? Anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Next, make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of April second, twenty-twenty-five for review. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. First, we have a vote to accept Richard Jefferson's retirement from the DPW on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
And one item of note to his credit, just want to let you know, he has served thirty-five years for the time.
Wow. So please, a thank you letter. I was also happy to hear, not that I would expect anything different, but in his retirement letter, the good experience he had meeting with the retirement board and all the information that was provided, so that's always great to hear. But I'll make a reluctant motion, I guess, to accept the retirement of Richard Jefferson from the DPW on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second, and I'll miss seat him at the transfer station.
Yeah.
I'll vote in favor.
I'll vote in favor and everything.
Yeah, so I, I think to your point, Richie's been a staple, he's the only one that's been there in the 23, 24 years I think I've been in town, I don't really recall anyone else, so it will be different. I hope he, maybe with a little luck, he gets to spend like a couple of days in the new facility.
I hope so, too.
All right, so we all, we all in favor? We good, we're done there, okay. Next is a, make a motion to appoint Nick Iafredi as records access officer for the building department.
So there's a perfunctory vote as per state law, when the records officer changed a handful of years ago into the new public records law in 2021, all department heads have to become their own records officer. The town clerk, as you can see here, then called, is called the super record access officer. So with that said, that she's informing the board that we do have to officially name him as the records officer of the building commission, of the building department.
Super.
Am I good?
Yep, make a motion to appoint Nick Iafredi as record officer for building department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is just a, not just, but a vote to appoint poll workers, and there's a list attached, we can put that on the screen. Any discussion?
Make a motion to appoint the poll workers as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have no correspondence from the public to determine a course of action, and we have no public in the room at this time, so we move on to the town administrators' report.
Thank you, and I will say that One Horse Shay Antiques is right before the town line on East Center Street, on the right-hand side traveling from the center of town.
So I think you were correct, Christine.
Yep.
That's the one.
Good.
First is a, an FYI about signing off for the Crush Cancer Annual 5K Run, also about there is, as you know, there is the Spring Fest that you discussed earlier in May, but there's also gonna be children fun nights and summer concert series, so we've signed off on all of those, but at Friendship Park for fun nights, there will be two of them, one in June and one in July, and then for the summer concert series, there is a total of six, one in June, four in July, one in August, all of those are on Tuesday nights. Again, we signed off on that. The fire truck, we had a 2013 fire engine that unfortunately, with a Cummins diesel engine, that unfortunately has failed, and it is beyond repair, just unfortunate. As a result of that, we have received multiple bids from multiple vendors, it is between $61,000 and $70,000 to replace it with a brand-new engine, or $23,000 to replace it with a rebuilt engine. Part of it is, the, the decision-making process is not just cost, it's also time, is that the rebuilt engine will take about a week and a couple of days to install, and a new engine, because think about a manufacturer's build engines for new vehicles, we're being told a lead time of a minimum of six months, if not a year, and based on our current experience, you may remember, we ordered a fire truck two years ago, we were told two years, and we're now still being told it's about another 18 months. So we can't have an engine not be operational for a year plus. So with that said, the fire chief has, I've authorized the fire chief to do the replacement with the reman at $23,000, it does come with a one-year warranty, so we can get that back in stock. He believes, and we believe that we're going, we, we charge it off to his budget, we think that we're going to be able to find some savings in order to be able to pay for it, but if we don't, we will be back here in the summer, we do end-of-year transfers, to have to make up that deficit, and I just, I wanna make sure the board was, one, informed as to what's going on with the engine, but two, if we have to do an end-of-year transfer, that you, you knew, you know, months in advance as to why we're having to do it. Update on the budget, you approved the FY26 operational budget at your last meeting, it went to the finance committee the following night, and the finance committee recommended all of the, the budget as you did as well. So in the finance committee handbook, you will see Board of Selectmen approved budget, and a finance committee recommended budget, and they will be consistent with each other. Then from there, tonight, you voted on all of your articles and your motions, the articles will then go to the finance committee tomorrow evening, they will then vote on their recommendations, which will get printed in the book, and on Tuesday, we'll be officially done everything that we could possibly have done for the budget, because it will go to the printer, it takes about a week, seven days or so, seven working days for it to get turned around, and then we will post the warrant, which you signed earlier, so that we can post and get the finance committee book online for, for the May 12th town meeting. Your next meeting is on May 7th. Last item on that is that not only will you meet on May 7th, which is your normal Board of Selectmen business meeting, is on May 12th at town meeting, which starts at 6 o'clock, I will post you at 5:30, so that way if there is any last-minute items that you need to discuss or vote on, you're legally able to do so.
And I guess one last item, it's a carryover from our last meeting, and only because it got rained out, but the town cleanup, that was supposed to take place last Saturday, is now taking place this Saturday due to the unpleasant weather, and I think this Saturday looks pretty good, so I just wanna throw that out there as well. All the details are online, consistent with what they were for last Saturday, so. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Ben.